Okay, looks like it's about 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 by my watch. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, Mary, you've got everybody that's here.
Do you want me to do your roll call?
You can do whatever you want. You can write down our names, or you can...
I'm usually writing the Zappson.
That works for me. And I guess at this point, we should introduce our new alternate, Andrew Neldin, who is sitting here. Do you want to tell us about yourself a little bit?
I've been a resident of Baldonville for, in the village, 97 East Donad Street, for almost 11 years. This July, it'll be 11 years. My wife and I moved up here. I grew up in the Manoa area. Currently, I'm employed by the state as a plant utility engineer at Upstate Community Hospital. So I've been doing that in refrigeration HVAC for 13, 14 years.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I guess at this point, we also should introduce our new codes officer, Tim Gally. Welcome.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate the invite. I'm Tim Gally. I live in Bayberry with my wife. I retired a year ago from Dazzy. Worked for the Dormitory Authority doing commercial building inspections for 28 years, or 32 years, excuse me. I've been a Morris Corners fireman and EMT for 50 years. I'm going to look around here. Got to make sure no knives come out of the crud. I was mayor of Albert for eight years, and on the board for another nine and a half after that. And we moved over to Bayberry about 10 years ago. Excuse me for my throat.
Is there anything you haven't done?
Codes and Baldonville.
I've got three kids and two grandkids. That's enough. Thank you for the invite. Nice to meet everybody.
Welcome aboard. So we don't have any old business. I'd like to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or changes? I only have one last paragraph on page one. There's an S on Jenkins.
Thank you for, I was trying to go with something hip, but I guess I'll go with Jenkins.
And that's all I have. Does anybody else have any corrections, additions, changes to the minutes?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second the motion. I'll make the motion.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, then, under new business, we have a couple of applicants here that I'll let them introduce themselves in a few moments regarding 380 Meadow Street. And at this point, it looks like this is going to be a concept review with no action this evening, and we can get into that as we talk about the project. Would you like to give us an introduction? Who you are, what the project is about, what you're planning on doing, that kind of thing?
Sure. Can we sit in the basement?
Yes, just be careful.
I'm Dave Sawyer, a frontline. We both grew up here in the village, but then we both started our businesses about 85. No, I started at 95. I was earlier than 85. I started a business. We bought the building on Meadow Street about 20 years ago.
You can sit if you'd like.
Can we?
Be careful.
And we both run our businesses out of that building for the past 20 years. He's gotten really big. I've only gotten a little bit bigger, but we need more space. The building is very old, and we just now just wanted to expand it. The parking lot is bad. It's time to do the parking lot, but we didn't want to do any of that if we knew we were going to put up a new building. So it was like, okay, it's a domino effect. Let's take the plunge, put up the new building. We need the space anyways. Fix the parking lot. It's a great piece of property. Most people don't know Meadow Street even exists down in the village. It's tucked away behind everything. It's great. We're actually surrounded by village property on two of the sides. And we've talked about this probably five years. And we just decided, okay, now that the prices of everything have doubled, now's the time we're going to do it.
Makes a lot of sense. Can you tell us a little bit about what you do at that building?
Sure. Basically, just storage.
Okay.
He has a landscape business, and I have an heating and conditioning business. And for the most part, it's just materials and there's no...
Yeah, we don't have retail. We don't do any industrial. I have a forklift and pallets of block, and I keep my equipment down there, and Fred keeps all his equipment down there.
Okay. You service any equipment or anything like that there?
No.
Okay, so it's just basically material storage?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay.
I will fabricate certain things because depending on the type of job it is, different piping things that we can build that are easier in a controlled environment. But other than that, it's not, you know, it's not like a service station or vehicle maintenance or anything like that.
Okay. I looked through your environmental assessment form, and there's some, a couple of boxes not checked. I'm guessing you perhaps didn't know the correct answer.
On the application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we can help you with those. One of the questions relates to floodplain, and it is in the floodplain, which has code implications, village code based on properties that are on floodplains, and it needs some additional drawing detail. It basically says, "The lowest floor has to be elevated two or above, two feet above the base flood elevation, or can be floodproof so that the structure is watertight below two feet above the flood elevation." So that's something that would have to show up on your formal site plan, probably in the elevations of the pole barn building. I don't know if your pole builder has an engineer on staff. I mean, he must have some engineering on staff to engineer the buildings.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, it's possible. I'm just thinking that might be an easy help because the elevations on the building only need to show that structure.
Right. The difficulty with that is, is that we really can't change the elevation of the floor of the building without changing the entire elevation of the entire rest of the building.
I agree, which is probably why you'd want to waterproof it, but that's, you know, that's not for me to figure out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's something that has, I mean, it isn't pole barn, but there's probably, Greg had mentioned something, right, about a baffle or something, but we didn't understand what that was.
He mentioned floodgates or flood dampers.
Okay.
Which allow the water to come in.
Okay.
So I don't know.
So I'm just looking at the village code, and it's section 189-19, which is non-residential structures, and that's where I'm getting that information from, based on the zone. You're in AE zone there. And so you will have to comply with that.
Sure.
How you do it is, you know, there are options for that.
In what code book is that coming out of?
It's the village code.
Does the village law?
Yeah. And I think I would like to also turn this over to our code official and maybe to Jamie too, in case you have some additional things other than what I found on the floodplain issues.
The floodplain, excuse me, I want to speak. You could accomplish that by raising the base, the floor, two feet, and then your construction begins at that point. So you're above the base. They call them B-fees, the base flood elevation. And what you alluded to for damper vents, every hundred square feet, you have to have a 10 by 10-inch damper. When the water goes up, you wouldn't have to go above two feet, but these dampers have to be installed on both ends of each end of the building. So when the water goes up one end, they open up and they flood, and they don't compromise the entire building. That's what you're...
So basically, it's just allowing the water to come in one end?
You're going to allow it, but it's not going to destroy the entire contest.
Okay.
It's going to raise up to its level of...
So are the floodgates or flood dampers, are they in addition to raising the floor level?
No, no.
They're to do up.
Yes, but you'd have to get approval through elevation certificates and land surveyors. You're going to need that, and then engineering plan.
That's why I asked about the engineer.
It still has to go through the engineering process. I can't say, well, you need this big. It might be this big. I don't know.
Correct.
So nothing to do with the architect, then? This isn't engineered?
Well, a lot of times, a pole barn architect will have an engineer on staff that they work with to help them make sure that their drawings are engineered properly. And it's possible. I was just thinking, if they do, it would be easier.
Okay. We can start to check out, you know? We can ask them. They build a lot of them, so...
I'm assuming the project's going to be in excess of 20,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that automatically, $20,001 kicks you into the New York City rules and regulations, and that requires engineered plans all the way across the board, the whole process.
Yeah.
You know, the floodplain is just another issue within that engineered issue. That's all. If that makes sense to you.
Well, it does, yeah. Yeah, I mean, as long as there's, you know, if we have to have an engineer look at it or have somebody that comes up with a plan to make it done, well, it's not a big deal.
It's dual.
Just dual.
It's, you just have to do it, so to speak.
Yeah.
Should we go through the EAF for the couple of questions that were answered, Jamie, and try and assist them with that?
Sure. That's a good place to start.
Okay. So I have, on page three, first page of the EAF form, the short form. Question one, "Does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation?" And that would be in doubt. Correct?
See, does it involve...
Legislation, adoption of a plan.
Right, so the answer's no.
Yeah.
I don't know why you didn't answer that.
Yeah.
I actually had a question about item 14, which is, "Identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site. Check all that apply." And you checked urban, and I'm wondering if it's suburban. I mean, everything is relative.
Yeah, you know, that's...
I don't think it matters, but for my own adification, I was like, well, wait. Okay, and then 16, "Is the project site located in the 100-year floodplain?" That's yes. And then, what was the last one? That might be it. I think those are the only ones that you didn't... Oh, "Is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulations?"
Well, the answer is...
Yeah.
There's the answer to that. So we've come to the conclusion that, I'm going to start talking legal stuff here, but that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So it's a use that would, if someone were to come in new to do this, it's not a use that's allowed in the commercial zone. If it's something that was existing for a long period of time or before the code, or it looks like it's been there a long time, which Tim and I have discussed and think it has been, then it can remain as a use, provided that the use is not expanded or that the structure is not expanded. So we did a couple of, some down and dirty calculations, and figured that this replacement building is basically an in-kind, in-size, and it's not otherwise expanding use. So the answer is, for these purposes, yes.
Okay.
Because it's pre-existing, non-conforming. Just for the board to understand that that's an analysis that we had to go through, and if this building were much bigger, then the answer would be, no, you can't do it. Or if it was, if the use was being expanded in some way, I can't think of what it would be.
Well, proportionally, we didn't want anything bigger on the lot anyways because we wanted green space, and we still wanted the moment. We didn't want to dwarf what was already there, so we really only looked to expand it so because we're basically splitting it in two, the new part for our businesses. But the thing is, the old building only has eight-foot doors, and neither one of us can get our trucks in our building. So we wanted taller doors, and we can do it with the building that's there, so that's basically how we got to where we are now.
So that's the finding, so it's allowed. But what this board then is supposed to look at is site plan. And I don't know what I'm truly, I was just seeing this now, but this does not appear, this is your property, right?
Correct, yeah.
Do you know what this is?
I probably should get Fred over here because he's been with all the surveys stuff forever on this. Okay.
Is this like the neighboring?
Yes, this is neighboring, because this is Syracuse Street out here.
Right, and it's Syracuse.
Boat over here.
Right. This is probably this.
Dump over here somewhere with somebody.
Do I get that term?
Well, that's right.
That's a permanent right of way. Right in the driveway. This is a car.
Well, here's...
This is our reversal.
I don't think it's the right person. I don't know where it was seen there.
I mean, that's Meadow Street.
I think that's up just a little bit further. Because we're rated together, and we're rated right and down. Very village, Jamie.
Yeah, Meadow Street actually has back here.
It looks like the road continues like this.
It is confusing. We had it surveyed like three times.
It goes away, it's like it's ghosted over it.
This is the survey.
We just had it done.
It was cut back and...
We had it done again. He restamped it.
Says 2016 is the update. Is that done since then?
Yes.
Here somewhere. Yeah, there's another road that's coming back out, kind of.
Is this the, what are you looking at?
The survey?
This is stamped November 2021. Is that when you had it done?
Okay.
And then this is...
That should be right, yeah.
But that's not this property. Where are you seeing it, Mary?
It's all over there.
It says down in this corner that it's part of block 54, November 18th.
Yeah, but that wasn't our property on that one.
Yeah, but it was in the file. Greg must somehow or another got to the codes and Greg put it in the file, assuming it was yours.
We had a property like this dispute with the guy next door.
There's the, this is the update. The original date's 2002, and that's updated 2016. I'm a highlighter, sorry.
So we have this one that's 2016 anyway. If you have a more updated...
I thought he was going to send that, Senator was going to send that to Greg.
And that's who it's from. I don't think he sent Greg. I'm wondering if he sent Greg the wrong parcel.
Maybe.
Because if you had a dispute with the neighbor, I bet that's the neighbor's piece.
No.
No?
No, I don't think that is, but...
Do you want me to call Steve tomorrow?
I can call him.
Well, I think we have a couple of other things, though, to talk about. So a site, a site plan, we have building, we have building, right? We have something, kind of. But what this board looks at is the site, right, and the site plan. So that's the question that's before this board, and right now, we don't actually have a site plan, which is, this is where we're having the driveway, this is where we've got the fence.
This is where we're improving our parking.
Right, where's, you know, is the parking going to be gravel? Is it grass? Now, I personally was not at the site. I know that Tim went out. I know Terry went out. I did look at it on the Google today, and I will look at it, but... So the questions for this board is, like, what are you planning on doing? So I don't know who's had a chance to look at the site. Unfortunately, also, and we're going under some flux here, my computer didn't automatically connect to the internet, and nobody seems to know the password, so Greg took those with him also. So we'll try to get that straightened out next time, or I would be able to show it. Or if you want to look at it on your phones, you can, you can Google it and look at it.
You can just get it up on your...
If you just put in, and I was able to pull it up easily with the address of 380 Meadow Street.
Yeah, and really, nothing changes as far as entry. We had the right of way in from the front that goes between the fence opening that isn't, the fence is not ours.
The fence that's around your property isn't yours? Who's it?
No. It's Nick's up front, that owns the mall up front.
Huh.
Yeah, that fence is not ours.
Can't probably see it there.
Our entry doesn't even have a fence shown on it, does it?
No.
No.
There isn't.
It's not on our property. It's not his property.
I don't even see where it shows the, you know, the fence adjacent, in other words, on somebody else's property, but it, I don't see it here, which is interesting.
Mmm, a mystery.
I love a mystery.
Yeah, he put that fence in about five years ago, six years ago.
So, you know, there, I don't, again, to look at the site, we need some kind of a site plan. I don't know if we want to have delineated parking. I'm not saying you have to. I'm just saying, these are the things you need to look at. Any kind of delineated parking. Do you want gravel? Do you want to add any green space? And I'm, so that's the discussion that this board should have tonight, to give the applicant an idea of what they need to put on a site plan, and...
Does anybody have any commentary that they would like to impart?
With respect to the parking, is there a code minimum that their, in terms of the condition of the parking, does it have to be gravel? Does it have to be asphalt? Does it, given the floodplain conversation we had earlier?
Well, it's all based on the act of see of the structure. So you need one handicap for over 26 that increases the merit.
Isn't that a, for a public, for a public building? It's not a public building. It's private.
Nobody goes there, right?
It's a commercial building, though. It's, so that's where, it's private, so is somebody's dental office private, but it's a commercial structure, so...
Yeah, my question would be, if no one goes there except the owner, do you still need...
You would need just one.
Okay.
One handicap.
Does that mean hanging a sign and...
We'll say it seven feet up, yes, okay. Whether it's dirt or asphalt.
But you can't hang it on the neighbor's fence.
Something else on the neighbor's fence.
I don't know also what, how this board feels about anything being outside of the, on the property, and if you want to have any regulations about that, like outdoor storage of items, if you were going to say everything needs to be indoors, or maybe you can say a truck hitch can be outside, but that's within your purview to say what can be outside of the structure, so...
How do you handle trash? Do you have dumpsters or anything like that?
Yeah, we have a cardboard dumpster and a regular dumpster.
Okay.
And that's on the exterior, interior, so that's something that should be located on the site plan as well? Do you, can you say where it is? Can you tell us where it is?
Yeah, I mean, it's on the backside of the building. Actually, they'd be, right now, one's there and one's there because the only real access we have, because there's power lines here for the garbage truck, is they need to come in through here to access them without, so they can lift them without being into the wires.
And there is quite a bit of green space around there, as I recall.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean...
The parking lot does need work.
Yeah, especially the one coming in that we drive in that we don't own. That's the right of way, and we would love to pave that, but I'm not sure where we stand with our neighborhood with that, so...
Yeah.
So mostly, we're not going to pay for it.
No, no, no.
We mostly come in from the Meadow Street side because that other one is lumpy, to be very honest. It's probably good that it's really lumpy.
Because, so that's the other thing you should be showing, right, is your access. So Meadow Street's up here.
Yes.
So if you've got a driveway, you should be showing it. So ultimately, especially because you're on a non-conforming use, you want to have everything on the site plan?
Okay.
So someday, when we're long gone and they say, you can't do that, you'll be like, well, yeah, it's approved, it's on the site.
Can I draw the site plan? Is this something I can do, or is it something a four-year degree's going to need?
It's got to be a scale, pretty much, so...
Well, yeah, but I mean, if I'm using, if I'm using, you know, the plan that we have here, which is to scale, and I draw everything to scale on it, and I don't care either way, I'm just saying, if I can do it, then I'll do it for you.
And my plan doesn't have any bathrooms, or, I don't know, what building's going to be insulated, correct?
Terry, that's up to you.
We weren't insulating the new building. We didn't, I mean, it's a storage.
Not right away.
Where we're planning on...
That's what I mean now. Natural gas, all your utilities should be on your site plan as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's natural gas in the old building now, but, I mean...
Then all of that would go overhead, if that was the case.
Lighting and fucking in the parking lot, that kind of stuff. Excuse me.
Which we don't have, but we do, would like to have, just, we will probably put, probably just on the building, if that's all it needs, but...
Some wall break or something?
I guess my question is, whatever you're required to have, it's not a parking lot. It's our, it's our parking lot. It's not parking for anybody else.
The only reason we want lighting is for security, you know, because we are down there where it's quiet and pretty dead, and we really haven't had any problems, but, you know, if we're going to do this, then, you know, obviously, we would want lighting and probably some level of security, I would think.
So that's part of the site plan review, and they need to be, if dark sky compliant, you can't have up, up lighting, but that's something that Tim can look at.
And you look for fixtures, you just have to make sure they're dark sky compliant, which means they don't shine.
Sure, they shine down.
Yeah, they, yeah.
And then usually, you bring in, you, as part of the site plan, you show us where in the building they're going to be, or if they're going to be ground mounted in some way, and then where they're, and then a catch sheet, like, from the manufacturer.
That's metal. That's a metal.
Yeah.
They haven't scared us yet.
We usually like to see the photo metrics on it, but you can get that off any manufacturer's job site.
Yeah.
Now, do you have trailers and such that you're storing onsite? Are you trying to keep that parked, and is that part of why you're raising the door heights?
Well, what do you mean trailers?
Like, do you mean equipment trailers or, you know?
I have equipment trailers down there, yeah. I mean, flat, nothing that we store stuff on.
No one closes?
But it is, I mean, I have for myself, and I guess I can say for Fred. For me, when I come back every day, at the end of the day, we unload all our equipment back in the building and secure it in the building. It would be really nice to just pull my truck in the building, all the tools in it, and lock the building. I mean, that's really all I was, all I was after with the taller. And he has a...
I've got a service van. A service van, blockable, so I don't, I mean, it'd be nice to pull it in there in the winter time, that's, so we're not having to brush that whole thing off every time, but, other than that, no, it's basically a service van, and I think we have a trailer because, well, we've got just a small utility trailer that's there, nothing, no storage units or anything like that.
Okay, so do we have some items that we would like to see on the plan?
Did we talk about the storage? Again, I was down there a couple of times. There was somebody, I assume the landscapers, bricks, pavers, et cetera, outdoors. Of course, they didn't look very secure, neither was the lot, but that's probably your problem, not mine necessarily, but we are going to talk about storage of how they're going to keep excess brick, block, stone. I mean, some landscapers put in bins and they drive in and scoop them out.
Well, that's aggregate. All that stuff's palletized.
You're just strictly hardscape?
We could palletize, yeah. I mean, there's a couple piles of stuff all back with this parking lot hole filled stuff.
Because I seen that, and I'm like, that...
Yeah. Now, I'm almost entirely hardscape. So, everything... Everything... I won't say everything, but almost everything I deal with is palletized.
Okay.
Which I do store outside, though. You know, I mean...
I think we need to see the location of where it would be stored. And probably delineate it and not just be like, "Well, today I'm gonna put them here or there."
Are you writing a list?
I am working on it, yes, I know. I'll go back over it.
There's quite a bit of space all the way around the building. I noticed there was guys parked one side and guys parked the other. Look like employees, probably. You could probably make that one area more and storage in the other, maybe? Just to clean it for the...
Yes, well, the big thing is, is that, you know, the parking lot's pretty rough.
Oh, yeah, I went into my car and I was afraid I wasn't getting through it.
My forklift only goes where it's the smoothest. So, that's why stuff is stored there right now. Eventually, I mean, we would like to repaint the whole...
Yeah, no, I understand. It's money.
But you're right. I mean, it's... It would be nice to keep... What happens is with Meadow Street is we get a lot of through traffic. Which is why we don't mind the big potholes on that one side because it slows people down. I mean, you can't believe the people that come off of Meadow Street because they know we're a cut through.
Well, with the walkways down there.
Yeah, so we can't... We do get a lot of traffic that cuts through in the back. So, quite frankly, yes, I'd like to keep all of my materials on the other side of the building once the new building is up. So, I don't have anything in the back. So, we've been very fortunate. We haven't had...
So, that would be something you would just put on the site plan, just delineate, you know, a rectangle that says material storage?
Yeah, yeah. And that's not a problem. I mean, I try not to have too much inventory, but sometimes I end up with inventory.
It's more about getting all the pieces identified. And like as Jamie said, so later, somebody doesn't say, "Well, you didn't get those lights, okay."
Sure, sure. No, we understand. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna go to bed twice if we don't have to.
No, that would be not great. All right, so, is you done with your list yet?
Well, I'm gonna try.
Trying to buy you time.
No, I'm gonna... So, I have... We do need a site plan. You probably should talk to Mr. Sanger so he can, you know, send you to someone who can... Because there's quite a number of things I think that need to go on here. You need engineered plans for the building. Mr. Gingham was telling you about that, for the elevation issue. You need at least one ADA accessible space. And, you know, I would say just show whatever other parking you would need on the site. For each of you leaves your trucks there during the day or whatever, if there's anyone else or you think you need more. That should be on there. The outside storage area should be delineated. And I don't know if anyone has opinions on where they want that to be or how much it should be or how much it can be. But also, what will be in the outdoor storage area? Like, only materials for the project?
The business.
The business. Do you store stuff outside?
This stuff's worth money, man.
So, one more before we go on, because this may add to the list. Since there's two businesses, are you gonna use the same entrance? Are each of you gonna have one? So, for that case...
We always use the same one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you had an entrance and you had one, do we need a parking... An ADA for parking for each business, so to speak? Or is it per the building, I guess?
Right. Yeah. No, I mean, we've always just used this thing. It's not... I mean, he is a two-person company. I'm a two-person company. So, there's not a lot of... It'd be great if we had some more employees.
Well...
We can't find any.
What you're gonna do with the whole parking lot area? Are you gonna re-gravel it or asphalt any of it? What are you gonna do with that? And the parameters of it? And location of any green space?
All right.
Again, I haven't been out there, so...
They have.
Is it gonna be grass? Is it gonna be...
There's quite a bit of green space.
Yeah, we have already...
More than we want to mow. We do have a lot of...
So, I don't know if you want it cleaned up or delineated anyway, but at least we'll show that. Did I say location of driveways? If I didn't, I'm gonna say it now. And the lighting, we talked about. And the cut sheets for the lighting. Lighting, where and what type?
Is the lighting required?
If you're going to have lighting, it's required. But if you're not gonna have lighting, but I think you probably will.
She means it's required on the site plan if you're having lighting.
Is it required, period?
No.
No.
We haven't had it for 20 years. We may not have it again.
But it is a...
She just means if you're going to add lighting, it should be on the site.
Right, oh, no.
That's what I heard, if you want it so secure.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's the point we're all making is that if we are gonna add lighting in the future, we don't want all of a sudden to have a neighbor say, "Well, you didn't plan on this lighting." So, you're asking... Or you're saying, "Put it on now so we don't have to deal with this later." I mean, we should.
That's not exactly what I'm saying. Because if you're not gonna have it, it's... If you're gonna put it on, then it's gonna be part of the site plan and you'd have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question is, are we required to have outside lighting?
No.
I don't believe you are.
That was more my question, for example.
I read about in other locations where there was a Buick dealer and they went 24 feet. They said, "Oh, yeah, the light comes to here and stops." Well, that's not how it works. Lady put a complaint and then he had to put like $100 for each light. She flexors them.
Yeah.
So, just to illuminate any future problems.
Oh, yeah.
Because it'll all come back to me and then I'm gonna be talking to you again. You know?
Yeah, I just... The way that was just... Thing we had, we had to, that it was a minimal...
And they're just really tired about wall packs. So, that's pretty easy to find dark-skinned compliant.
It would be.
Do you get to store any mulch? Or like you said, it's gonna be all hard? Okay, I just wondered about holders.
Yeah, no, it's... I don't...